For those of you guys, this is Mike Amstrath, he's our internal counsel for W M R. He'll be joining us on the board.
Good afternoon.
Mike.
Good afternoon to you.
Twenty more than two nights you're calling busy. That's Monday as well.
Yeah, it's off nice.
The long bridge. Long drum.
Over your car.
Forty eight. Thirty seven minutes.
Second week of the year.
Well, we don't need to hurt teams. Everyone has a foot of water up here.
No, we do not.
I mean, if they're in food, just all forgets things wrong.
Not at first speed.
No.
Vacation, though, or?
We have, yes. Few times.
Nothing but.
Ah, I can't even.
I wouldn't be going in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Four months.
Probably a couple of years.
And flights might be cheap down there, though.
Yeah.
And I isn't Monty, well, no, it's better than the airport in Montego Bay is better than what it used to be. If you fly flying to Dominican, it's uh. Based on that, it's aggressive.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
You guys from around the area or?
South, south.
Central.
All over.
There's a lot of them. I presume.
Not a whole lot of them.
From this other.
Right, yeah, I've got me home drawn.
Yeah.
Lucky to have her.
Yeah. Is your clock on?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, follow the meeting order, much allegiance.
Much allegiance.
United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that? The no, no other idea, right?
No.
Well, thank you guys for a meeting. Um, yeah, I think it's just the initial meeting um to exchange. Proposals by the town. Um, I guess we'll just start on. I guess I should clarify, Mike, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect. Um, I guess the first item, uh, it's not really, well, I guess it is a proposal. Updating the original nineteen ninety-three agreement, um, just so. You know, right now, it's it's the original agreement from nineteen ninety-three plus the two amendments. Like to, our proposal is to revise that into a, you know, one singular document. Um, and the modify- modifications would be, you know, whatever we agree to. Um, between now and final, you know, final approvals. Um, but puts it in a format that's uh more easily readable for both parties. And then if there's future negotiations or expansions, you know, we have a working document rather than. You know, cobble together a bunch of older documents. Um, and I had, I. I'll I'll open the floor to you guys, give your thoughts on on that.
I don't have any um major objections with you, just basically saying in lieu of a third amendment.
Yeah.
Trying to cobble together a sort of third amendment.
Revised, restated uh agreement.
Yeah.
Clean it up easier to.
Okay.
In one.
Okay.
Yep.
That's fine, but Mike, I don't assume you have any problems with that?
Yeah, yeah, I think some some new paper makes sense here. I kind of kind of use the old one as a baseline.
And, you know, if that's something you want, uh, you you want us to to initially put together and then obviously subject to your guys' review and approval to make sure, you know, the language is still. You know, reflects what the prior agreements were and what we're able to agree to now. Um, so then I guess the, you know, the next proposal is uh looking at the the host or the tipping fee. Um, I think the original nineteen ninety-three agreement that's located at section three. It was amend- amended at section one of the nineteen ninety-six uh first amend amendment? Think I have that right? Um, the current current language is there's quarterly payments of one uh uh. Host or tipping fees are paid quarterly. Um, the original agreement started at twenty-five cents in ninety nineteen ninety-six, that was modified to seventy-five cents with a CPI. Annual escalator. Um, I guess the the town's initial proposal would be um. Four fifty-five a ton, keeping the uh annual escalator as is. Um, I think the town would. Prefer to have tonnage reports submitted to the landfill advisory committee quarterly uh at the at the time of of payments. Um, and it get uh and I'll I'll turn it over to to you guys. Um, yeah, on on thoughts for that.
Well, the easy ones, providing reports is not an issue. We can do that, and obviously we're here to negotiate the terms of the new agreement, which will include. A, you know, negotiating a host fee, which we have now, has been increased per CPI. I think that's perfectly reasonable to start there if we want as part of the terms. I would suggest we create a term sheet before we write a whole new agreement.
Yeah.
And try to come to agree on some of those terms. The way I look at um host, you know, host agreement negotiations and this process is the state has really set this up. So that the community has a chance to negotiate a fair compensation for the impacts associated with, in this case, the expansion. Tom has an agreement that they've come to agreement with the landfill on as being fair compensation for the existing impacts. We are now negotiating for impacts on this new proposed expansion airspace. So I think that's where we've got to come to terms on what are those impacts? We would love to hear from the town as to what newer additional impacts warrant additional comp- compensation. That's, I think, where we need to take the conversation.
Sure.
Or where we should, things we should talk about. Um, and then that ultimately comes to the compensation package, which can come in the form of host fees, tipping fees. Free disposal, road ma- I mean, there's, you name it, everything's negotiable. Not everything's arbitral, but everything's negotiable.
Uh, yeah, that's well said, um, as far as. You know, primary concerns for the town and I, if anyone else has additional thoughts, you know, you're the you're the residents that live here. Um, my understanding is is one of the main concerns is, you know, it's it's nearly eight million cubic yards of additional landfill or expansion that's proposed. Um, I I I got that based from the initial report.
That's existing, I think six point two is the.
Six point two, okay. Uh, okay, six point two million cubic yards of new disposal area. Um, and then from the initial site report, uh, the out-of-state volume from the Twin Cities area is expected to increase substantially. Um.
Possibly.
And and uh that's at page nine of the reports. Um, it looks like the annual average, there there's a reported annual average of a hundred and twenty thousand tons of waste that's currently being. Uh.
I think if you looked at our records, Tina, we'd be between a hundred and twenty to one fifty-eight years in our our run rate, and that's public public information.
Yeah, yeah.
That's in the state.
Um, yeah, and I, that was reported as the annual average, but looking at the last three years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, it's been. Above above that average. Um, I I think the the concern is, you know. The the increase in out-of-state uh landfill going, you know, that that does nothing for the, you know, the the towns. Or it doesn't benefit the town at all.
When they still collect the host fee on that.
Correct. Um, subject to whatever the, whatever those agreements, um, I think there was there was some exceptions. Um, I know bio remediated uh waste was accounted for, but there are a couple other categories that weren't.
Typically, the beneficial reuse categories with a number of landfill agreements in the state. We, they exempt those from host fees to try and uh promote recycle and promote use of materials or disposal materials.
Yeah.
That's typically been the intent of these agreements in the past.
And that was taken out, but it was uh amended in the second amendment, correct? That it's, we do pay on that.
Um, on the bio.
On bio remediation.
Yep, yep, you're a hundred percent right on that, I think the, I I'm trying to. Let's see if I can pull. Uh, it does not include recycled or treated waste, and that if it's to promote recycling, uh, that that makes sense. There was something also regarding ash, I want I want to say. No, don't take ash, okay.
Yep.
Um, but again, my understanding is that the, you know, the substantial, potential substantial uptick in out-of-state uh waste is a matter of concern for the town. Um, and I'll get, I'll open it up to the team if there are any other concerns that are um. You know, that that weigh on you guys.
Jim, you had mentioned the uh the electricity then, too.
Well, yeah, there was a, I never quite understood the process, and I was part of the original bargaining team, which wasn't, it wasn't really a bargaining team. Uh, but um, I think in the original document, it said that we can't. We can't stand in the way of you producing electricity. And I often wondered, well, how much electricity do you produce, how do you benefit from it? Uh, from from the methane, it would take X number of years before I believe that it would be operational, that you could get enough methane to run what you're going to run. I'm assuming you're going to do the same thing with the new facility that that you're you're putting together, uh, you know, and so I'm thinking, well. If you benefit, why don't we benefit? And in the back of my mind, when you said, you know, like, in the process of negotiations, you know, it's kind of give and take. And I think, I don't know if you were here, but I moved into the town about maybe two months prior to the the meeting in the old town hall, this town of stumps. And I walked into the meeting and the police were there. And it was bad, there were people just, it was screaming, I don't know if you, I don't believe you were there.
I was not part of it.
There were people, there were people that were were just having a fit and they ended up voting the approval for the landfill. And I don't think anybody knew they voted for the approval of a landfill. Uh, were were you there? It was unbelievable, and the anger and the frustration, it's kind of like nobody wants a dump in their backyard.
For the landfill, so yeah, that would have been um, that was with Russ County landfill.
It was Bill Rans.
Right.
That was Bill Rans.
Bill Rans, first.
And there's a story behind that, and you don't want to, you know, that it gets to be a messy situation. So I keep thinking, so they approved it and then we had to set up all this, all the agreements and. And and so in my mind, when we look at the increase in the tonnage, the cost for the hosting fees and all that. It it's appropriate to to reach an agreement because I back up, you you know, you were to vote again, do we want a landfill here? Most people probably would say no. You know, it'd be a no, and I think you'd have to realize that. I think it's really well-run, I think it's really clean. Um, I find that when I had to deal with Tina, and I'm sure the rest of the board, same thing, it's she's really easy to work with and and cooperative. And we had other people in charge here that weren't very cooperative and weren't too easy. Um, so. So, yeah, I think when you take all that and and encompass all that, I, yeah, I think our 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 proposal is within reason. Um, we can negotiate it, but I'm thinking, you know, I have to go back and think of all those people at that meeting that didn't want that landfill.
Sure.
And and some people think it was incredibly underhanded. In fact, there were questions about the board at that time receiving engineering fees. That weren't appropriate, and then they ended up having to give those fees back. And I think the fees were ten thousand, five thousand, five thousand, I I don't know if any of you gentlemen ever. Recall for sure, but that was all part of that, so. You know, and we've we've worked with you as a company when we reduced your assessment. The original assessment was extremely high, um, when you were first putting things together and. And we went to the Department of Revenue and we worked with you to get the assessment forward at that time. So I kind of approached the negotiations in that framework and. And I, you know, I I tried to find out how much electricity you produce, but I couldn't, I called Jump River, they knew nothing about it. They must get their electricity from Darien- Darienland.
Yeah.
You know, and so they didn't know anything about it, so, you know, I was going to also ask you, well, what what kind of wattage do you put out? If that's the right term, I don't know really anything about production at all.
Well, first, I mean, appreciate the comments and the history, I certainly wasn't here or part of any underhand.
But that's how, that's how, that's how it's perceived.
Appreciate that, and um, you know, I think our viewpoint on it is, you know, I'm happy to hear that Tina's running a really good site. I agree, I think the landfill up here looks really nice and it's really well-run and it's a, it's a, it's a good facility. Waste management's perspective is the not-in-my-backyard attitude is something we're very used to. Um, one of those businesses that it is going to have that attitude towards us and, uh, but we do feel we provide an essential service. Um, you know, if you go back a number of years before we were building engineered landfills and managing them and running them the way we were, this country had some serious health problems. And environmental problems associated with disposal of of trash. Nobody wants it in their backyard, but we still have people putting the garbage out at the end of the driveway every day that want to get rid of it. And so it's a service that we try to provide and we try to provide that in as safe a manner as possible, using the best management practices available to us today and engineering these facilities to be protective of human health. That's the service we offer. Um, we get it, if people don't want that, if people don't want a turkey farm in their backyard either, or very fun in some a lot of cases. We're one of those, one of those entities that becomes a service that's necessary for society to operate and 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 we try to provide that service in a really efficient and. Uh, way that reduce, that limits impact on on our neighbors and the public and again, human health. So that's, that's kind of our viewpoint of why we want to continue to run this, we we have have this asset here. Um, it's still providing a service to the electronic communities. Um, and that's sort of the the impacts that are left are what we're here to negotiate, I think, is is the point. Um, to your comment on electricity, we do generate electricity at the landfill. We have a sister company, it's called W M R, U Renewable Energy. They um developed a landfill gas to engine plant there, they use Caterpillar engines to burn the landfill gas. At um, they're about a megawatt per hour each, I think, ten of those ones, I can't, I've never, they've got thirty-five sixteen to thirty-five twenties there. They're about a megawatt each, they run, they try to run three of them.
They have both.
They have both, okay.
They have both.
I, it's, I'm going to say it's around, I don't want you to poke me on this, around three megawatts uh each, and uh total power generation.
Is that twenty-four hours a day?
We try, um, the the cost for you developing renewable energy and using landfill gas used to be subsidized through credits. Um, those are no longer available for landfill gas energy, those have been taken up by the wind farms, and wind farms are basically fulfilling the. The green portfolios of the dairy lenses and the we energies and things of that nature. So that, those are no longer, so what you're seeing is a lot of these engine plants be shut down because of cost. Cost of electricity in this country is extremely cheap, and we have to sell it at market rate because there's no contract available for us anymore. So it's it's whatever the spot price is, which, I don't know, right now it's hanging around forty dollars, I mean, you can look this stuff up, forty dollars a megawatt or something, or uh. Anyways.
What is it, or kill a lot?
It it's, these, I can tell you the plants themselves barely break even now without the subsidy. But that's the energy story, and 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 we, we as W M are committed to sustainability, I mean, you can go and read our reports online and. We want to continue to beneficially reuse that gas as much as possible. The alternative to controlling it is we flare it. So if it's not being used for energy production, we do want to control that because otherwise it enters the atmosphere as methane, right? And that has a higher global potential, global warming potential uh than CO2, which is what would be admitted when we flare it. So the alternative to what we're doing in the engines, which, you know, is really fiscally questionable at the moment, um, is we feel is still better than, you know, just flaring, which would be our other option. And we do still flare some gas when our engines are down or if we don't, if we're generating more gas than our engines.
There's three of those?
There's, there's three running. Yeah.
There's four with three running at all times, I'll take them down and put the other one up.
Yeah.
I guess my um, I appreciate your comments initially, you know, to kind of draw the. Floor plan for negotiations.
Yep.
Versus, you know, you've already came to kind of an agreement with the town for what you have currently operating. Um, and then what you're going to bring to the table now with this new uh add-on site? So I guess that maybe draw the picture real clear for us. Most of us here are new to the committee here and and looking forward to the opportunity to learn more about the landfill itself. I will say also thank you to you, as since you have taken over uh the management there, I mean, I've seen her out picking up garbage.
I've called her.
That's.
It is in my backyard.
So I am one of those people, I want it, I don't want anybody, yeah, so. Uh, so thank you for that, I mean, it's been, that has been very noticeable by all of us here, so. Um, but I guess to to draw comparison, how many cells do you currently have open that you're accepting garbage into?
Well, open, I would say we just have one.
Okay.
Open right now, and then there's others that are in various phases of construction, whether that be in under intermediate cover, final cover. Or we've just built a new cell that is currently under D N R review, reviewing our documentation report for the liner. Um, I'm sure we'll be moving into that hopefully before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you've got, when you're coming in and you're looking off that's, when you're you're facing the landfill, when you're sitting on the scale. If you're looking straight ahead, all that off to your left, to the south, straight ahead, is all capped.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're looking from, you'll see, you'll notice that burn going up the side, that slope. Off of that is in intermediate cover right now.
Okay.
It's for final.
Yeah. We kind of look at it like a couple of ways, you either, you got areas that are under final cover, intermediate cover, active, or new liner being constructed, that are kind of the area.
This is for a a new site, or did you develop the site?
The current cell that you're talking about?
Yes.
That, so it's part of the permitted landfill footprint.
Okay.
Would have been part of the last expansion.
Okay, so this new one is being.
Yep.
Has it started construction or not started?
Just completed construction.
The new cell.
The new cell, okay.
To the north there.
And the one we're negotiating that is another one.
That's often.
Okay, so, yeah, so the the expansion will be a new one, and that's following this state permitting timeline.
Okay.
So how many cells are we expecting you to develop?
So it's twenty-nine acres, we developed cells, it depends on tonnage, we, you don't want to overbuild the cell because then you just collect rainwater. You know, and and then you're just treating rainwater and putting a burden on your, on your sorry wastewater treatment plant. So we're really are targeting cells that fit the amount of waste coming to the landfill. Here, so that we can build up out of ground and not just collect rainwater and put it into.
So the cell that is being, that's just about done now, is immediately to the north when I come in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then there, then there's a possibility within X number of years that there'll be another cell probably to the west of that? Or to the north?
Right now, we're um in our current footprint.
Right.
We we just built a cell that's like one twenty-eight acres, then in two years, we plan on finishing that cell. When we used to build cells, we would build, like, we have uh one. Now we've got cell nine, is nine, A, one, two, and three, we're building it in three different portions like Tyler. You don't build the whole cell because the amount of uh garbage that we're taking, there's a, you know, a lack of coverage that we were taking compared to when we were.
So more, it's maybe somewhat hard to think of it as cells, what we think of it as, like, how much do we need to develop to sort of be reasonable time-filling period, right? So if we want to build every third year, how quickly can we get up out of ground, shed the stormwater, be more protective of of the infrastructure and reduce our energy generation? So right now, please, with our current intake, we're building about a three-acre cell every, call it every other year. Uh, roughly, just to give you an idea.
And the cell we're negotiating, when will you start that, or what's your plan to start?
That, so that's be like twenty twenty-eight.
So all these, just for clarification, it sounds like all these cells that are being constructed are part of the the current, the the current scope.
Right.
So you you just said every other year, you're you're starting a new.
That's been our case, yeah, under current tonnage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has that rate since nineteen ninety-six, has that increased? That's, that time period increased, or has it gotten, has it stayed the same?
It's actually decreased.
Decreasing in in amount of intake.
I mean, from, like, in in nineteen ninety-seven, prior to ninety-seven, we stopped taking Minnesota waste in nineteen, in nineteen ninety-seven. So, you know, we were building almost every year when I first started, and now.
Every other.
It's, we went from, we, I think we built it in two thousand. Eighteen to twenty-one. To. Twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yeah.
But they're smaller now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're building like, just the portions now.
So the overall tonnage then maybe is about the same or a little plus or minus each year since the beginning?
I I would guess that the tonnage has decreased here, there's a couple of things driving that, um, uh, out-of-state waste, I'm sure is probably the biggest one.
Right, right.
Two thousand and eight, Wisconsin came out with their fifty, I think it's about fif- their thirteen-dollar kick free tax.
Okay.
And we pushed almost all the out-of-state waste out of here, and it still will be tough to bring waste from our state into Wisconsin because of the fees in Wisconsin. It's, we just pay a lot for our waste here compared to our neighbors. So, from a tax perspective.
Okay. Or was it? So it's it's decreased amount of tonnage, but you had said earlier, um, with the expansion. The uh, the amount of out-of-state um garbage could potentially increase with this new.
Yeah, so the the permit, the state permitting process requires us to do a certificate of, or it's not, it's a needs analysis. And there's a, there's a, there's a whole technical guidance document about how a landfill needs to look at the need for airspace. And that's the process we followed, and part of that is looking at what out-of-state waste may come this way. So the comment that you're reading in there is following that technical guidance of like, okay, well, how much waste may be, may come here? We're a, we're a business, I mean, no waste is guaranteed to us, we have to compete for that waste. We're competing, like I said, we're already, I'm just telling you, we're behind the eight ball in Wisconsin from a competition perspective compared to Minnesota, which is exactly thirteen bucks. Thirteen, right, so. Part of the the statements in the feasibility report are part of this needs analysis that has to follow a technical guidance, so how much airspace do you need? Right, and that's the guidance we follow when we develop it. It looked at out-of-state waste, certainly, absolutely, that's a possibility, there are no guarantees. We could lose half our business tomorrow, or or, you know, a business.
Right.
That's, that could happen. We could double tomorrow. I mean, I know I'm not gonna sit here in front of this committee and tell you any guarantees on tonnage, there's just.
You know, I do think it would be good, other board, that, that we, we need to take a look. I, I know we, we would, I went there a couple times. Um, I don't know if it was with you, the person receiving you, I think, um, that I went to the top of one of the facilities, I looked at the, uh, the ponds in the back, or polymer, and I think, I, I don't know if I have a mentally clear picture. I know that there's a hole being dug, and I know you're gonna do something with it, but I don't think I understand the scope of your project in terms of expansion, you know, look at, again, your generation, which I really appreciate your explanation, I wish, about fifteen, twenty years ago, that someone would have come here and would have explained that generation process and the costs and what you're producing a long time ago. And we don't really have that connection at times, it's, it's only when there's a crisis of some sort that we end up showing up here, or you're gonna expand. We don't, you know, we don't really communicate other than, we probably all see Tina, we talk to her on a regular basis, but, but I think that, I think that would be good to, to do, to go there and check the site.
Absolutely, I've offered.
Just a tour. I don't think we have to post it as a meeting if we all, you know, we're, we're, we're just gonna go there and take a look.
And, and you know, the, the, the current terms of the agreement does provide for that. I think, uh, the original agreement says onsite inspections are allowed for the life of the landfill upon reasonable notice. Um, you know, it's just one of those, one of those terms that, you know, it's incumbent on the, on, on the town or the landfill advisory committee to, uh, to take up, or, you know, exercise that, that right under the agreement, so. Um, you know, it, it sounds, if, if this roadmap is, is accurate, you know, there, there's plenty of time between, you know, now and e- even the feasibility determination for, you know, maybe to get that inspection, or just the, the tour and see the, see the workings of, you know, how, how they, how they do things, or.
And it would be good to do it, I'm just gonna say sooner rather than later, so, cause we do have a cell, the new cell that we are not in yet, that we're waiting for approval from the DNR. You're gonna see the makeup of, you know, where, kind of.
Before school.
Yeah, if you wanna go down and walk down and see a liner system.
I saw, I did, I did see the original liner system being put in, I thought that was impressive. I saw how polymer works, not that I scientifically understood it, but I, I, I watched that. Cause there was water that had spilled out during a rainy event or something, and I think they refined.
That was, um, I, I think what you're talking about was the very first year of construction. That was pre any of us.
Right, but there was, I remember there was a, it went over, then they adjusted everything, and I'm assuming it works good because we have, there hasn't been any issues with it.
Yeah, you can, you can unique soil. You do, I, it's, it's very unique, the, what you're referring to is, uh, I work way on top. It was, uh, the, the soil here has unique properties that, the particles actually stay in suspension longer than normal soil. It's called Brownian motion. It's quite fascinating physics if you're into it, but, um, the normal engineered stormwater controls that the state requires do a very good job of dropping most particle sizes out, but when they stay in suspension due to this Brownian motion, they don't drop out. So that's why we had to add, that's the problem they had. We're running through our approved stormwater, uh, treatment system, but it wasn't dropping those particles out. And, and so the discharge had a higher TSS, suspended solids, than what the state would allow. This was, this is going back nineties, early.
Ninety-three.
Yeah, okay, way before, I've read about it, then I understand the treatment system. So that's why we had the polymer, those polymers grab those particles and, and it works very, very well.
When was, uh, the, uh, last time that the committee even met? Cause I, I mean, the town has never had a committee as long as I've known it. It's like, that's, that's, that's the thing. So we're, you know, we're definitely gonna start a committee, you know, to, you know, just not to snoop, not to, you know, just to build this relationship and, you know, do the right things for the community. I mean, it's, um, you know, you hear complaints now and then about the dump, and Jim, he alluded to it here earlier, you know, when people are up in arms and everything, you know. Um, by getting a committee, you know, that'll help build a relationship, and we, we do have a fairly good relationship now. You know, and we need us and we need you.
So if I can just try and get back on track a little bit. So, uh, comparison wise, um, how long do you think this new, in yellow is the new stuff here on the map?
That's right, yes, that's the twenty-nine.
How many years do you think that's gonna provide the landfill with space to put new cells in?
Yeah, uh, there's, there's a lot, obviously, what we win as a business for work, you know, goes into that.
Based on what you've had.
If I said fifteen or twenty years.
Fifteen to twenty?
Yeah, I mean, that's as good of estimate as I can, I can provide, I'm reading a crystal ball.
And I think that's even cited in the initial reports, that, that's the anticipated extension of the landfill's current life.
Yeah, okay. And then I, I think my last comment, or, you know, before I let others speak. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate, like I said, that, you know, the initial comments alluding to this agreement pertaining to new stuff.
Yeah.
However, at the same time, technologies and materials improve quickly. And this has already been there for thirty years. Um, so I think some concern is about those initial cells that were built, you know, and maybe groundwater testing downstream, you know, at wells, to, to monitor more efficiently and effectively the potential for groundwater contamination. Um, based on what's already been agreed upon in the agreement, because nobody can have a crystal ball either and know whether or not those are gonna hold up for another fifty years.
Certainly, yeah, the next topic on the negotiation.
I just wanted to, you know, point out, I mean, I, I do appreciate, Dave, the town had already came to an agreement on existing sites, but I think the concern more from, at least from my perspective, is what's already in the ground, because, I mean, materials have come a long way. I mean, I work construction and this particle board nowadays, I mean, you can, Daniel set outside for a year. Compared to OSB, you know, it would melt away in months, but.
Yeah, the, um, so, that total, and I haven't read everything what was agreed in here as far as monitoring requirements go, but I will tell you, our monitoring plan hasn't been the same since ninety-three. We have certainly kept up with our environmental monitoring approvals, um, and those are, are set at federal and state level of how we go about monitoring the groundwater and the environment, air included, and those permits have been updated routinely since this landfill conception. The good, the nice, I mean, what you have here is a landfill that's all fairly modern, there's not an old, you know, unlined section of this landfill. This is all of, um, modern composite lined landfill, which, that's the engineering, um, that's still used today. Um, it's a very robust liner system that, you know, has been proven for decades now to, um, you know, not allow for the contamination of groundwater to occur. And you're, you'll see that in our monitoring results as well. The site doesn't have any concerns from a groundwater perspective, and there's a monitoring network around the landfill of monitoring the shallow and deep water outlets, looking to make sure that that liner system isn't leaking or causing some sort of environmental concern. And that, that system is, is robust and up to current code. Um, so, just trying to speak to your concerns about the age of the system. Yes, the landfill was approved ninety-three, this agreement was approved ninety-three, but our, and our techniques of doing things have kept up with the state and federal rules, which have been updated routinely since ninety-three to monitor and prevent those things, using best available technology.
So are the wells, um, still tested? And do you send them to the, does the town ever receive the results of the, the testing?
I don't send them to the town, I don't, no, I don't think that was ever a requirement. Um, I don't, can they, are those available?
Yes, you certainly access the public information, you submit them to the state, um, with, along with the report.
You know, if someone came to a town board and said, well, the wells are, do you ever test them? And I would say, um, I don't know.
Is this onsite testing or offsite testing?
Sampling is done of the well onsite, and then they go to a certified laboratory.
Are the, are the original wells that were tested still tested? According to the agreement, you know?
You're talking about offsite.
Yeah.
Yeah, the offsite.
I think there, there's a certain number of offsite wells that, uh, that Rust County, or when it was owned by Rust County, paid for that well testing, um, and I don't think there have been, I, I guess, for clarification, I'm, I'm unsure whether there's been any follow-up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually not sure on that as well. Uh, private wells testing, I mean, we certainly do it, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a subject for some people. It's their private well.
Yes. Especially for the residents that live within, you know, a mile of the landfill.
And we, yeah, and we did for many years, but I, I can't, um, we, we could ask Keith when they actually stopped doing that.
I'm sure we have some record.
Um, we had to do it for so many years, and we don't, cause I, I think we did the Turkey Barren area, wherever.
You know, the hearers there.
And I think especially, yeah, especially for those residents within that one mile radius, I think that would be something that wa- that, that, you know, may bring peace of mind, um, is just periodic testing, I mean, you know, I, whether that's, it certainly wouldn't be annual or biannual, but like, periodic testing just for peace of mind to show that, you know, contamination levels are, you know.
That's a good question to hear.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something that, that the agreement can entertain. We can't, we cannot, just to, to make sure, so we cannot make people. We don't refuse that sampling, and you'll find, just as a word of caution, there's a lot, sometimes a lot of reasons people don't want their wells sent. Because there are things not related to landfill contamination that you can find in a well that I'll require you to have a deed restriction on October. And those things are, some people may not understand that. And it's gotten committees and towns and outlaws.
And again, it might be something that's incumbent on the property owner to bring to the attention of the landfill advisory committee once reestablished, and then, and then working from there.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Um, clarification, does, does the current, uh, site have, uh, al- allow for, for composting? Any, any service like that?
So we did compost.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have a, we did, but we took it, um, our inner company, um, hauling division out of Eau Claire, then Chippewa would, uh, bring up the compost. We don't have a setup area for residents, um, and we, we've never had anybody bringing any in or.
Yeah, there are a number of residents have requested, you know, this, so it is important.
And it's, I, I think that would have to be, and I'm, I'm just saying this out of, um, just even dealing with the recycling and the appliance, you know, that I, there, there would have to be a lot of education on that, on what they can do, because with the recycling, uh, we still end up with contaminated loads, you know, with our containers back there, and no bags, and we still get bags, and, you know, so they're, that, you know, with, um, the, our inner company bringing it in, it, it was well monitored then.
So are you asking for yard composting or food composting?
You know, a number of residents have asked for, like, leaves and branches and stuff like that. Now, if that's all they bring in, fine, but as Tina says, you don't want to bring in. No, we really don't want to bring in something. But if there's anything you can do there.
One touch briefly, uh, probably just, it's, it's not a poll, just rather, rather, an amendment to the existing language, um, as it pertains to road repair, traffic flow, and I, I think the agreement limits traffic flow to, you know, Highway Eight Hutchinson Road. Uh, I think the language may have to be amended, uh, from Hutchinson Road to be North, no, North Hutchinson Road. Um, and, and Dave, I think you may have, is that, it's going from Hutchinson to North?
Highway Eight North, which is North Hutchinson. Cause it just says Hutchinson in the, the language in the contract. It could be right over here.
Right.
Yeah, because technically, I guess this is South.
This is so, that's north, yeah.
So just north of Aitken. And are you using that, um, there's a second exit beyond your original exit?
We only use that for clay, when we, when we're building a cellar, we're stockpiling clay, um, offsite for cells. We use that to keep that land, to keep those trucks away from our residence, our residential area, because if we, if we had all that truck, those trucks bypassing the scale, it would be.
Any, uh, you know, just thinking it'd be nice if you could take care of the road up to that second entrance.
Okay.
Where the clay trucks are going.
Yeah, pine top or whatever.
You're not planning on, or you are planning on moving to Scale House or anything with the next cells? Or are we continually using the same one?
Okay.
Just was wondering if you had a plan.
No.
Of the future, you know, for a Scale House and all that.
Okay.
It is, right.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, I was just curious.
Sociological payments, do you wanna hit on that, Justin?
Well, I think that, you know, that ties into, um, you know, the, the, the well testing and then, I, I mean, since, since the original ninety-three agreement, I think the, uh, um, the, the existing language said for the life of the landfill, any landowners with property within a mile, uh, who believe they suffered a diminution of property value may appear at any landfill advisory committee meeting to apply for compensation. I think the bar for that would have been within five years of the landfill opening. I think in the last thirty years, there may have been a, a new generation of property owners that, that live within that mile, and you, you guys may be able to confirm better than I, since I, you know, I'm, I'm not from Stubbs or living in here.
I think in that first initial, there was one, and that was Rick and Mary Hall, when they were, it was Ziegler's.
I think, uh, opening that back up to the, uh, the, the, the new residents or the, you know, the new landowners that are within that one mile, um, a- again, ball, you know, ball would be in their court to bring those concerns to the, to, to the committee. But, um, you know, and I, I think that ties into, you know, what, what, what's, uh, fair and reasonable based on the, the town's concerns that we, that we discussed at the, at the beginning of the, the meeting.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, those ones are, of the ones I reached out to, mainly on the east side there, out to Ross Lane, Rick and Mary, Jim Drowse, Mick Discerny, um, you know, she was one that, you know, did complain that with the input of the, uh, engines being there, and she, she can hear them, uh, running. Now, as, I mean, she's kinda gotten used to them, and then, uh, four thirty, when everybody kinda comes in.
Uh, when they're doing the pre, the hauling.
The noise, you know, so there is an impact there from hauling, from hauling.
And that's, that was probably Mary Hall.
Yes.
Yeah. And I, I, that was, uh, that was, when, and I haven't had a complaint from Mary, but I know when Trevor was there, that was always saying. I, and Mary, I haven't had a discussion with Mary since I've been.
The manager. Yeah, I just, I just reached out.
Yeah.
In preparation for this.
And I knew that was a good start, yeah, and it is.
They're pretty close.
They are, right, they're kinda right at that back corner, if you, as a crow flies, it's. And that's, yeah, that's the hauling division at the, that's a separate entity.
And, you know, I think, uh, if, if someone were to petition the, the, the committee for, for compens- And, you know, I think, uh, if, if someone were to petition the, the, the committee for, for compensation, I, you know, whether, whether they can show a diminution of property value through appraisal or, or something like that, because if it was just opened up to, I, I think there's forty something parcels that are within that one.
No residents.
Yes, yeah, yes, um, I can see that, I can.
Owner, owner occupied.
Right.
Right.
Literally, you got to live in there to have a problem.
Yeah, and, and I've always kind of had the opinion that, you know, well, if you moved in.
His name wasn't on the, on the, on the house, yes.
I agree.
You knew, you knew.
You knew it had.
So now it's, you know, now I.
It would have to be something where.
So now the landfill's moving north, well, you weren't in a mile, now you may be in a mile.
Yes, yes.
I think it's a more reasonable approach to them.
It would have to be, yeah, within, within a mile and then the, the diminution of property value has to be as a result of this, you know, new expansion. Not just like give out a house that was within a mile of the landfill.
Resident wise, it's not horrendous among residents, you know, it's, it's landowners, yeah, but not residents.
So would the committee like us to, I mean, is that something the committee is asking us to propose? Property value protection home for those, for that mile, for that, is that what's kind of being asked?
Yes, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Then we got to identify the actual residents.
They, they could even qualify, let alone ones that might actually petition for that.
Yes.
Really, you know, because they have to qualify for it.
Yes.
And I, and I think, you know, part of the mindset there is they, those people that have lived there for as long as you've been around, or the landfill, say you, but, don't get any more benefit than, than the way that lives over on the river and on the lake, you know, with free garbage and they've had to put up with it. Me, myself, living on Highway eight, extra traffic and garbage occasionally out the trucks, not often, or as often as it used to be, um, but they just haven't gotten any, and they're the ones that have to deal with it, you know, on a day to day basis, night and day, morning. Be nice to kind of try to compensate them in some fashion.
Yeah, you know, I, it, it's, the compensation is, is how it gets broken up. Ultimately, come down to this negotiating.
Yeah, and it's all much money in the pot.
Yeah, and, you know, what's the impact worth and who's, how's it going to be?
Um, shifting towards, and I think this, this timeline was, is really nice, thank you for providing it.
Yeah, that's our, our best estimate based on our current.
Yeah, yeah, I think it brought some clair- clarity towards some of the questions the team had. One was the feasibility report, I, I know we, uh, I received a copy of the, or we received a copy of the initial site.
Yep.
Report, um, that we're at, you know, where are we at with feasibility report, so it sounds like.
It's under DNR review.
Yeah, yeah.
They do their completeness review, then I fully expect there to be some doubt, they always request, hey, what about this?
Yeah.
Can you give us some more information on this? And then we'll provide that, and then ultimately the next step for them is to, to say yes, that it's complete, and then we go to a public comment period.
The, the worry was that it, you know, it may, it may have been done and we just like missed, you know, missed getting a copy, not that you guys wanted to provide the copy, but, I, based on this timeline, would that be something that, you know, if this is adhered to, we could see in January, or would that be towards that April twenty twenty-sixth, where you get the determination?
Determined, so just to be clear, there's two, two, two pieces, there's completeness, which then triggers the public comment period. That I would expect to see in June.
Okay.
Then, after public comment period, DNR looks at public comments, we should address all, all the comments, and then they issue their determination. I think that's going to be in April.
Okay.
That's my, that's my estimate. Talk a little bit on fire and ambulance at an library, um, you know, a number of residents are elderly in this community, I mean, the majority are elderly. And, uh, you know, fire protection, ambulance protection, um, is something that, you know, definitely is a need. It would certainly help another number of residents if, um, some type of compensation would be given to ambulance and fire and, uh, the library also. Okay.
You mentioned competitive or competing for trash.
Yeah.
Can I ask how, how you're looking, are you looking to make some changes to bring in more trash? To good people?
I, we are in the middle of nowhere. We are in the middle of nowhere, and we are in direct competition with Southern Mile and Eau Claire and Republic.
Yeah.
You know, so if we're trying, are we going to get that race, you know, race late? If, if they're closer to Simone, you know, you're, that, our headwinds and our tail.
Or a private business competing for work, and that will never change, and we have, we have, the great about this country is we have competition.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, well, the incinerator's got to be part of that too, we mentioned.
Incinerator is also part of it.
Yeah, because that's real.
You guys, yeah, and we, we get some from Sprecht.
Yeah, by my notice, I think that whoever comes here, because he finishes here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, located in a larger community, I mean, he had the service, but then he got a lot of complaints. It's just the opposite.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, are, do I, am I calling my sales, our sales team, hey, come on? Yes, um, does it happen?
Yeah.
Few and far between.
Well, I mean, I just kind of try to see, you know, potential increase of what might come.
Even with.
Make more garbage.
Like that, yeah.
I can't, I'm doing my share.
Bio remediation, you know, that bio remediation, when that came in, that was hot and heavy when we were, um, treating contaminated soil when petrol was in place. Um, now, how often?
Always a reduction of bio soils.
Yeah, and we, we very rarely get bio soils anymore.
Yeah. But a lot of the cleanup from, from stolen contamination has been completed through, run to the next, the next contaminant.
Yeah.
You know, that, and that may come here, we'll know what's ahead. Are there things that you need from us? Or you wish would be known? This is two-way street.
Right, I don't.
I mean, we welcome, um, you know, interaction. If anyone wants to come to the site or, it's, you certainly welcome that anytime. Wants to be a visit, just like this.
I think it's a good idea for, for the, the team, uh, the, the committee, um, just to get a better idea of the, you know, how, how things work over there, um, and it's probably a good activity in the interim while we wait for, you know, some of these other uh, next steps and, and, you know, uh, you know, proposals.
Yep.
Are exchanged.
And time flies by. You look at it, but it doesn't take long to fly.
Yeah, anything we can do to, to help educate, show you guys what's going on out there, more than happy to do that. I mean, for all both our sakes, we'd like to try and get through this process in an efficient manner. I mean, it's got to be a negotiation process, hopefully you can go, you know, both ways and get through it, you know, efficiently.
And I mean, yeah, you guys have been really good to work with too, like if we need, I mean, if we've needed help, if our salt center has been down or, you know, you guys have.
Stepped up.
Yeah.
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 So let me ask you this, it feels like you guys have given us a lot of asks. Is, is, is it appropriate to assume that you'd be okay with us now kind of turning around the term sheet and providing kind of a counter to some of these asks?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, as a, as a good next step?
Yeah.
It's a negotiating.
Yep.
I was.
Making sure we.
I was going to circulate, uh, business cards, so you guys, you guys have my contact attorney, or contact info, um, if I could get Micah's, or i- if I can expect something from Micah at some point, um, yeah.
Micah, speak up for him.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it, it, it just all sounds good, good to me, uh, you know, looking, looking through the old groups, I mean, I've gone over every provision in detail or anything. And I know, you know, Ty- Tyler, Tina, and Eric, I mean, I think we wanted, we still need to meet currently about some of these old provisions. We may want, because I think there's one provision in there that requires us to, right, dig up hazardous waste that was improperly delivered to us, regardless of like the amount or what it was, or, and I know there's a situation where we get it delivered several months ago in the state, doesn't think we need to dig it up, we don't think we need to dig it up. I just don't, I just don't want to preclude us from asking for changes to sections we haven't discussed today.
Sure, yeah.
Because I think there's a section like that, we, we may want to put an exception for if it's like a harmless situation.
Yeah.
Relatively harmless.
Yeah, and then actually did sparkle on an ask, I would ask you guys to consider, while we're in between meetings here, because Tina and I were talking about the free, free disposal, which, you know, that's in there now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but developing an amendment to limit that, so if someone's taking down an entire house and barn and everything, we pay the, we, A, you don't get the host fee for it, because it comes in free from that resident. We pay the state tax on it as well, and it, it, it seems a little unreasonable that we feel it seemed a little reasonable that they would provide free disposal for that level of an unlimited number.
Unlimited amount of household trash.
I think the agreement's normally.
I think the, the spirit of the agreement was.
It's government.
You're reconfirming. And, and I, I think for other agreements that my office has, has participated in, uh, there, there may be some clarifying language to that effect, so like, that's not unsurprising.
Barn or, yeah, I think.
It's when the language is, is worded how it is, you, you know, there may be examples where people are I don't know, say taking advantage of it, but like, using, using that to, to its full exten- extent.
How often does it occur?
So while this last, was it twenty-one, did Hopkins burn, we took all that concrete, and that ended up being like a hundred and ten additional ton, so then we're paying like thirteen hundred dollars in, uh, state fees on that, and the, when the house at the end of Amcoi, from the south end, right, there was, that house was taken down?
Were, uh, lambsloot?
I think so.
Yeah.
That house was that, because that was a whole concrete basement, but, I mean, that was a, that was an insane amount that we, and that was right before I became manager, I was with hauling division more then.
Okay.
Um, so, and I think that one was almost up in the, in the, um, we ended up paying like twenty, twenty thousand in state fees on that.
If something, uh, could be done there, would you consider taking, uh, garbage from residents who don't live here but have a home there? Such as the lake used to get it, you know, people on the lake used to get it.
Yeah, that, that's, that, we didn't change that.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, I, it's, I, I, that's.
Okay. That was a town.
It's one of those things where it's.
I mean, yeah, you don't.
It's a part of the whole.
Agreed, yeah.
What does the committee want to direct that compensation?
Yeah, I think that, well, yeah, WM didn't change that part of it.
Tell them, maybe that's household and consistent with the.
Yeah, and we went property owners, not, I think when we did it, because we managed it up until, what, five years ago, maybe, four years ago, um, we managed the, the scale, the passes.
Okay.
And then, um, the town started.
Your own, your passes not.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I think it should, because we don't know who, you know, I mean, you guys provided, you provide us with a, it used to be pro- provide us with a property owner list, and we kind of go off of that.
Okay.
And now I think it, it changed a lot of your credit, right, if you, yeah.
The pass is working good now for yous? Is that working fairly good or?
Yeah. It.
Is there a problem with the little cards?
No, there's just some, some, and I get it, there's like some elderly that, they have a card inside. Well, you know, with their number on it, and, am I going to say, hey, no, you have to go home and get your little card and come up to the window? We don't do that. If they have that number, we know who they are.
Yeah.
We let, we allow them to go through, if that's acceptable.
And not remitting?
No.
Okay.
The premise for having residents is, I think I was on the board at that time, and we were in agreement, the board members, that if you can afford to buy a piece of property on the lake or on the river, as a resident, you sure as hell can afford to pay for a load of garbage. You know, I'm not, I'm not overly sympathetic to the, to that, that group, I, I'll be honest with you. Um, yeah, you, too bad, you know, a lot of people, you go, I go places and I have, sometimes take my garbage back home. You know, I don't, I don't dump it, I don't, you know, to me, that's, we thought it's a benefit for residents, they live here and, and that's their incentive, so I'm probably on the other side of the fence, but I'm not sympathetic towards it. Um, you, you know, that's my, my, I'll be real honest, I'm, that's, that's how it evolved and that's where we are right now. So if that got shot down as a negotiation.
Because they, they all pay taxes, I mean, you pay taxes here, I mean, I just, yeah, yeah. There's nothing better.
I, I don't, that's not, we never change that, so, that's up to you guys.
So, they, yeah, I, I see both sides of it.
Does anyone, anyone else have any questions? Want to say otherwise, then we can just, uh, you know, mull it over and then exchange, uh, you know, proposal sheets and, and, uh, follow up and maybe coordinate a two or day, um, or time, time to.
Or maybe individual, because otherwise we gotta have the committee, we gotta take notice and.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter if it's one or two at a time of, of us.
It doesn't, I, I mean, my site truck will fit. There's four.
I would let you know already.
I think as long as we give them whatever notice they need at a time.
Oh, yeah.
I would say just concord with you.
Yeah. We just call up and.
I'm pretty busy doing it.
As long as you're outside that day.
Yeah, I, as long as I'm not in Mexico.
Do we have a, do we want to establish a cadence per, per meeting?
Yes. And, and follow up next, next meeting date, um, I am fairly open.
That's a, that's a loan.
You need to get a.
Get this back to us, but what do you think you guys need? Micah, is, is, uh, three weeks too soon to pull this together?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah. Three weeks, three weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, it goes pretty close to Thanksgiving though, I think, doesn't it?
Let's not, yeah.
This is, this is slumping country.
Yeah, please, let's say hit here.
Second week of December.
Or, uh.
Early December.
So when?
That's the eighth of December.
Second week, yeah.
December.
Try that.
When?
Second week of December.
Can we pick a day?
Pick a day or?
Be nice if we could give a day.
Day and a good, I could put on a calendar.
Second week of December, I don't think there, uh, Wednesdays, uh, I am in Jackson County all day for hearings in municipal work, um, other than that, any of the other days of the week, I can, I can pretty much.
Wednesdays I'm driving. One of your Tuesdays.
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesdays.
Bears play the Packers on December seventh, I'm a little nervous that we name that. I just could do that.
I would be nervous too. I know, I would be nervous too, like.
We're not that nervous.
So, we know we're gonna have trouble right away, he's a Bears.
Let's see, uh, in the second week, what is a Tuesday?
Yeah, what is a Tuesday?
A night.
Night, night, does that work? It look like it works for everybody?
I can make that work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's far enough out, I can, eighty-five percent sure I can make anything, or, uh, readjust if needed.
Tuesday, December ninth.
Appreciate you guys coming up and it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
On you as well, appreciate it. Is that it?
Yeah, just contact me anytime.
All right, Micah, I'll, we'll let you go. Thank you, Micah.
Thanks for enjoying my phone, thanks everyone.
Take care.
Thanks, Mike.
Want to make a motion or I'll just say?
Make a motion, close the meeting.
I'll second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passed.
Anything, Micah got a good note of it, so.
Yeah, perfect, and all right, pass. Just stick around.
Yep.
Good, good, good.
Well, thanks everyone.
Thank you. We can get them all hammered out in a long period of time.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.